Good evening, seeing that it is the hour of 6:00 PM on Monday, September 19th, 2022, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Series. Notice that this meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 59453, Subdivision E of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, Act, Series Resolution Number 2022-105, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing planning@ci-series.ca.us by 5:00 PM. The date of the meeting include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. Your written comment will be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of the Planning Commission. Okay, all rise please, and be in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Ketchel.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Present.
And Chairperson Smith.
Here, thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare?
No.
Saying none, we'll move on to Citizen Communications to this Commission on matters not included on the agenda. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Citizens are entitled to address the Planning Commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any matter not on the agenda? Please come to the podium and state your name, please.
Good evening, Commission, John Warren, City of Series. I'm bringing to the Commission's attention tonight an item that was voted on in August of 2013. It involved the Lazy Wheel Mabel Home Park. I believe three of you were on the Commission at that time, and two of you were present that evening when the item came forth and was voted upon. I have a copy of the minutes, and basically, the Planning Commission was going to determine the proposal to consider declaring the Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park property located at 1941 East Whitmore Avenue as a Group B non-conforming use in Group B non-conforming buildings, and establish a five-year time limit termination of the non-conforming use and building pursuant to Chapter 18.48 of the Series Municipal Code. The city attorney at that time, Mr. Lyons, explained that if this is adopted and the time limit is set for five years, the new owner will have to acquire it with the knowledge that the use as a mobile home park will be ending and must end within five years. It passed. The establishment is still there. The new owner took possession, I believe, and I think Mr. Ketchel's comment that night about waiting until the property sold may have been well thought out, because the property took four years to sell. And when the new owner took possession, there was only 16 months remaining until the end of the five-year period. Now, I'm assuming that the five-year period began that night when the vote was cast, okay, and not when the property was purchased. And even if it began when the property was purchased and filed in March of 17, when the deed was recorded, it would have expired this March, in March of '22. We're nine years out, and the problem is still there. And so I believe that the Commission should take some action, involve the city attorney, find out what the proper steps are, and move forward with taking care of this particular issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, for bringing that to our attention, and I'll ask staff to please conduct some research and bring it back to the Commission at the next meeting for a report. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, this sounds like a good idea.
Is there anyone else in the -- thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on any matter not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, is there anyone? Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located on the bottom right of your screen. If you're participating by phone, please press star nine on your phone. Names will be called in the order the requests are received, and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Have we received any public comments through email?
No, I have not.
All right, thank you. Saying none, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any questions on any items on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, then, will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Yes, Item 1, Clerk's Report of Posting. The agenda for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of September 19th, 2022, was posted on September 16th, 2022. Item 2A, Approval of Minutes from the Meeting of August 1st, 2022, and all Planning Commissioners were present. Item 2B, Approval of Minutes from the Meeting of August 15th, 2022, and Commissioner Martinez was absent that evening. Item 3A, General Correspondence Information Only. Series Downtown Revitalization Area Fiscal Year 2021-22 Quarterly Report for the Fourth Quarter.
All right, thank you. So the maker of the motion will please separate Item 2Bs. The first motion will be for Item 1, 2A, and 3, and then the second motion will be for Item 2B. Mr. Martinez will abstain. Do you have a motion? Thank you, I have a second. I have a motion and a double second. First, well, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchel.
Hi.
And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. The next motion will be for Item 2B only. Mr. Martinez will abstain from voting.
Make a motion to approve Item 2B.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, that was firm. I'll have, I mean, well, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Ketchel.
Hi.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson. And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, Item 4, Specific Plan Site Plan 22-14, Proposal for a Specific Plan Site Plan to construct a 50,800-square-foot, 122-room, four-story hotel at the southwest corner of Mitchell and Service Roads. Series Gateway Center LLC is the applicant. Staff have a report?
Yes, thank you. This proposal is a four-story, 122-room hotel, as was stated. The total height of the hotel is 47 feet at maximum, but most of the roof line is at 40 feet. Recently, the City Council approved changing the Mitchell Road corridor specific plan to allow heights above 35 feet, which was the previous requirement. That allowed for this project to continue to be processed through the planning department. The number of spaces for this project is 141, which exceeds the number that's required. And I'm sharing my screen here. You can see the landscaping plan. And the next page shows the overall perspective of the site, so you can roughly see what the colors and architecture will look like. And the last page shows the color samples and elevations of the building. This project is, I'm gonna change screens here. The overall location is in the Series Gateway Center along the freeway and next to Mitchell Road and Service Road. The hotel will be along the freeway on the southern portion of the site on a newly created parcel, parcel 11. I'm here to answer any of the questions you have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff? Thank you. I see none. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
Question. Directed at the fire chief. Looking at this plot map for the hotel, do you find that to have adequate access for emergency?
I believe this was reviewed by the fire department.
Okay.
So all plans need to be reviewed by the fire department and utilities before they come to the Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on page 21 of the draft resolution, which talks about the fire department's comments.
Chairperson Smith, if I may. In the conditions of approval, there's a section for the Fire Division to fill out conditions of approval. The hotel has some special ones that the other two proposals did not, tonight, did not have, and they're in respect to the site of the hotel.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Mr. Ketchel?
Yes, I have a fundamental question. This is a, you call an extended stay, bell chain. They operate on a defined budget. Yes, I mean, is there a difference between an apartment complex and a hotel? Because this basically functions as apartment complex. They rent rooms, kitchens, but utensils or some pants, stuff. No recreation facilities here at all. I can see any difference. The hours at the depth are limited. You can't check in at 6:00 in the morning. Because they're not, it kind of functions as an apartment complex, and I don't know. I just don't know if it's, I don't know that it, my level of concern reaches that it shouldn't be there. But I guess I was hoping for a little bit more as we, hotels coming in. A new hotel, which would be the first one in series in decades. Got some interlock, so I guess I'm just, I guess when people look at you, your city from the outside looking in, they say, well, this is the best we're gonna get in series. It's a little bad. Be a little uncomfortable, because I've been looking, I'm gonna be in Bakersfield, so I was looking at hotels there, and they have two of them. So I did a lot of digging, just by chance into this particular company is where I learned what I've learned about it. Ratings are about. So I just, is there, is there a difference in any use? Would it be any difference if we're an apartment complex? I just wonder what its long-term future would be.
I think, I wonder if that question may, city attorney, but let me say this.
Well, since you're here.
Extended stays, like the Residence Inn in North Desto. And one of the distinctions, and I think maybe it can help us, is regard to TOT.
What is that?
That's about as far as I'm gonna go.
I don't know what that is.
The tax.
Oh, okay. That's why I'm asking.
While she gets her microphone working, TOT is transient occupancy tax, which is paid by guests staying in hotels. And there's a limitation as to the length of the stay.
Okay.
Regarding when the tax can be charged, and I think it has to do with 28 days or something to that effect.
That's the information I guess I was looking for. Stink.
So staff could probably enter the technical aspect of it in the code, but yes, generally speaking, you're talking about determination of it being a short-term rental versus not being a short-term rental. And so that's really for purposes of classification, the TOT is the biggest component. But staff might have a better idea of the makeup of the business structure for this, this type of hotel slash budget.
What's going on with your mic?
Not sure, but we do have it in the works to upgrade the mic. I think the biggest difference is that hotel like this, even though it's extended stay, is considered a commercial use. Apartment complex would be a residential use, so you have very different traffic, you have different, you have different maybe demographics that would use the hotel versus an apartment complex. And you'd probably have, I mean, it's just a different animal, so. And you're right that the transient occupancy tax is a big factor in making this a good candidate for the site.
Okay. You know, that was what I was trying to get at. I was trying to, I didn't know these things, so I was like, well, like I said, we haven't had a hotel ever.
I don't think.
Anybody's recollection on the council here, commission here, an application. So it's brand new for us. I was just, these are thoughts that went through my head when I'm reading how it operates and almost like a hostel, where they don't have curtains on the windows, carpets on the floors or anything. Easy. And there's a market for that, obviously, and they, it's a good place, and that's wonderful. Wanted to see how it fit in under city's definition, so thank you, and thank you.
Okay.
So I don't know if this question's for the person proposing or for staff, but normally with the housing development, we get the breakdown of the house, because we get to see what they look like. There's nothing like that for the insides of this bell chain. Has that not already been designed and submitted to you? Then that's something we'd be, like Commissioner Ketchel said. I know it's a suite, so is it gonna have a kitchenette where they can cook and stay for a very extended long time, or has that not been proposed to you yet?
That's correct. We do have very preliminary floor plans, but usually Planning Commission necessarily look inside of the building as much as the outside of the building. Once we get to the building permit stage, then a lot of those details will be worked out. Thank you.
And I think we want to be clear that this is not a residential use. This is a hotel. And residential use, which would be apartment complexes such as what we saw last time we were here, did show us the different floor plans that were gonna be in the, in the complex. Good question. Are there any other questions? No? All right, if there are no questions, no additional questions, then I will accept a motion. Anyone?
Question that we expect the proposed entitlement is found consistent with the original mitigated negative center project, the proposed project also falls under the categorical exemption, Section 15332, Class 32 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Then I'll also make a motion to reprove site plan, specific plan site plan at the 22.
All right, so we have one motion, accepting the mitigated negative declaration, and then approving 22-14. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second, will clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchel.
Hi.
And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 5, Conditional Use Permit 22-15, Proposal for a Conditional Use Permit for a Gas Station and Convenience Store at the southwest corner of Mitchell and Service Roads. Charlie Brown Owner, CC Planning and Permitting Services is the applicant. Do we have staff report?
Yes, thank you. So we're looking at a very similar site plan, because it's in the same commercial area in the Series Gateway Center. This project that we're looking at now is the Union 76 Gas Station Convenience Store, located on the southeast, almost the corner of the Gateway Center site. The site plan is shown here, sharing my screen. The fuel canopy will be center, slightly west portion of the site with 12 pumps. There will be a trash enclosure on the north central part of the lot. The driveway to enter the commercial site is located just north of the site, and on the other side of that driveway is Starbucks that is almost ready to open. The convenience store on the east side of the site with, the interesting part of this is that there will be a secondary tenant space on the north end of this building. We don't know which use will be in there, but it will be a commercial use, probably some kind of fast food chain, because they've got in their plans a drive-through, and the drive-through will serve that secondary tenant space. You'll see later on elevation that the drive-through window on that northern. The convenience store and secondary tenant space will, will share this restroom facility center of the building. There are 41 parking stalls, and here are the colors and the design of the building. Where it says sign, those will be, they'll apply for a building permit, administrative, serial building permit for their signs once we know which business will enter the site. So it's stone and stucco for the design. Here's the drive-through window. If you have any questions, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, seeing none. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my name is Charlie Brown. I'm CC Planning and Permitting Services. I'm a permit expediter for the developer in this. Basically, I'm just here to answer any questions, if there are any, for the developer. The developer is also on Zoom, so he's more willing to speak up as well. And we're forward to hearing your suggestion.
Thank you. Before you leave, is there anyone have any questions of Mr. Brown? Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I see one hand raised, Sunny, and I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name. Guy?
Go ahead. You're on mute.
On mute, yeah.
Now we got you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. This is Sunny Guy, and I am the one developing this gas station, as well as the next one that'll come up for hearing, which is the Popeyes, of course, on different parcels. And this is the business we do. I've got a great project under construction in the city of Tracy downtown, next to City Hall, something similar. Just to give everybody comfort, the use inside the, the drive-through use inside the C store will be very minimal ancillary use, as we cannot do burgers, chicken, coffee, the Hawaiian barbecue stuff. So it's most likely probably something supportive ancillary, like a Jamba Juice, maybe, something like that. So it's not gonna be a full-fledged restaurant for burgers, chickens, any of that. All that stuff is restricted. Or maybe like, if there's no pizza, like Little Caesar's Pizza to go, that's all, as you know, Little Caesar's doesn't even have seating. It's mostly to grab and go. So the same people who are filling up gas, getting their chips and beer and soda pop, and swing around, as you know, Little Caesar's is like a run-of-the-mill pizza, where you can take A, B, or C, or maybe even a sub, sub sandwich shop, because there's no sandwich shop in the center. So it could be one of the sandwich brands between Subway or Firehouse or something like that. But it would be a very small ancillary use and not a full-size QSR restaurant use. We, you know, I built a few of those and, and cities across Northern California, and we build beautiful projects. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Guy? Okay, I have no questions. I appreciate the comments. Anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak on this item?
I see no more hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion or a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, if anyone has any discussion items.
Thank you.
I recommend that we accept proposed entitlement. It's found to be consistent with the original mitigated neg deck for the Series Gateway Center project. The proposed project also falls under categorical exemption, Section 15332, Class 32 for infill projects. That's of the California Environmental Quality Act. And the approval of this entitlement is not subject to further environmental review, and then approval of 22-15 CUP, subject to any of these conditions contained in the attached draft resolution, PC 22-24.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Will clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Ketchel.
Hi.
Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. That moves us to Item 6, Conditional Use Permit 22-16, Proposal for a Conditional Use Permit for a Popeyes Restaurant at the southwest corner of Mitchell and Service Roads. Again, Charlie Brown Owner, CC Planning and Permitting Services is the applicant. Do I have a staff report?
Yes, just a quick clarification that the, the owner is the Series Gateway Center LLC right now.
Uh-oh, is the agenda wrong? I'm just reading it from the agenda.
Yeah, it's okay. I think we can, he's, he's the applicant, so I think, I think we can correct that.
Oh, maybe, I don't know. I'm just reading it from the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
In any case, so this Popeyes, sorry, let me share my screen here.
So let me just be clear. All three of these owners are Series Gateway LLC are the owners, and Mr. Brown is the applicant rep for Items 6 and 5 and 6.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Everybody else get that?
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
Got it.
Sure, I'll speak for everybody. So here we have the site plan. So I should show you first where this is going. This is for a 2,616-square-foot quick-serve restaurant, and it's just north of Starbucks, also in the Series Gateway Center. It's between Starbucks and In-N-Out Burger. Here's the site plan. I'm gonna try to zoom in. Here we can see this trash enclosure on southwest corner. There are a total of 14 parking spaces out of, which more than required. There's a double lane drive-through here and what's called an escape lane here, which is very common at the end of the drive-through. The drive-through is oriented in such a way that the circulation is good for the entire site. This, it turns out that the Series Gateway Center has a lot of fast food restaurants, and their circulation works well. Um, this, it, it turns out that the series Gateway Center has a lot of, um, fast food restaurants and their circulation works well. Uh, so I will show you the elevations here. And Popeyes, like the other, um, restaurants in the vicinity, has a very unique brand. And, uh, hence the, uh, the colors that they're using in their facade are, are special to their brand and important to their brand. I wanted to point that out. Here, just the other side of the building. Other samples. So that was kind of a short, uh, report. Lot of information packed in the staff report, and I, I am here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff? Okay, Mr. Martinez.
Uh, Chris, I was just wondering, does each individual plot have its own trash can, or will any restaurants be sharing trash cans like, uh? One over there by the old Walmart, or Little Caesar's, or not Little Caesar's, but Panda Express, Starbucks, GameStop, they all share dumpster. They all have their owner be sharing.
In this case, each, uh, parcel has its own trash enclosure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Del Nero.
I just had a question for staff. It says in the middle of the. I've just read it a few minutes ago, infield development project. I wouldn't consider this an infill. It's, it's all coming out, all starting now. How come that says it like that?
Uh, so. The way the infill works, uh, to my understanding, it's have a vacant site, it's within a city that has development around it. It's not that you're tearing the building down and building it back. Place, that, that wouldn't be necessarily infill, but more that you have a vacant, uh, vacant ground with development near it. It's in the city. It's not like you're building on agricultural field out. That help.
Oh. My general idea of an infill is a place that hasn't been, everything around it's been probably the same thing, but it's been there for years. And obviously, this hasn't been there for years. This is a new, new project. So it's probably just semantics is what I'm talking about.
I think Mr. Catchell has something to help.
Right, right.
Yeah.
This, in this case, the infill refers to sequel to the California Environmental Quality Act language. And they referred in their infill as something for the development processes have already occurred. Back and fill gaps. In this case. Specifically, the environmental review was done to part of the gateway, yeah, or, not the deck, or whatever it was. Plus, plus, there was also an environment corridor at some point, so this would be the third time this is. Yeah, technically, we're not filling. In the, in the way the term is used from the environment. Think that's where the, and it is a little confusing. Technically, we're not something like. Street.
Right, right, and that's what I was, that's I'm just curious.
It's within an existing developed approved and sequenced study area. It's that category of sequel.
Great, that's a good explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Christopher, could you put the map up that showed all the development around it in the big open spot in the center? Okay, so we have, um, In-N-Out Burger, Starbucks, Chipotle. Panda Express, which is now Ono Hawaiian BBQ, and then, um. We just approved a gas station with a convenience store and a potential, uh, quick serve restaurant, right? And then, uh. Where's the quack-quack car wash? Quick-quack, sorry. Where's the quick-quack car wash?
Uh, one more, I will draw this for you here. So the northwest corner has the quick-quack.
Okay.
And pardon my, um, penmanship with the mouse.
Okay, so, and then the staff report says phase two, which I'm guessing can only be in the middle, right?
Yes.
Is that a, is that a storm drain there in that little triangle next to that? Is that, what is it?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so the vacant spot in the center, phase two will potentially include one to two junior box stores. As an example, that would be.
I, I have, let's see, how, how do I put this? A junior box store might be something like a TJ Maxx, something smaller, maybe like a Trader Joe's.
Okay, so, but commercial.
Would be commercial.
Retail, I mean, um, okay, because we have a lot of food going on here, which is great. Cause there's freeway on and off, and people get off and eat, but I, I would, I'm looking forward to seeing some variety there in the center.
I think we will see some variety.
Okay. Yeah, I thought you said Cold Stone.
Oh, no. Or, by the way, there's a grand opening at the Cold Stone on Mitchell and Wimper on September twenty-sixth, sorry.
See how I handed that to you? Are you, are you, is your light still on, or is? Okay.
It's been a while.
All right, anybody else have any questions of staff? Ain't none. I didn't open it to the public yet, did I? I got lost in myself. Open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brown? All right, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter?
I see no hands raised at this time.
All right, then I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for either discussion or a motion.
Uh, can I, um, sorry, can I do a quick point of order? Sunny has his hand up, and I'm not, I'm not sure if that's a carryover from his previous comment or not. Um, but let's see, I'm gonna allow him to talk. Go ahead, Sunny.
Oh, hi, uh, Sunny again, and no, not a carryover, I just wanted to jump in and say that, um. I, I built across a lot of cities, the closest one to use, if you go on Jacktown, Ripon. Uh, we've got the Burger King and the Popeyes, Popeyes opens, I believe, day after. But this is one city where we, Charlie and me have really enjoyed working with. And I want to thank staff and also planning commissioners for bringing this up so quickly. Uh, there are cities where we wait six months, eight months, nine months, and you guys have your act together, really. So just to thank you, on the drive-through side, just to give you a little note, our drive-through is unique in the sense. To even compared to Starbucks and In-N-Out, we have two menu boards, two cars ordering. But if you decide you want to add on some chicken when you get to my window, or if it's a very large order, as you will see. We have you move forward a little bit, so that card from behind can keep going. And there's a second window, um, pull-up window, where we will bring your food out. So everything keeps moving very, very quickly. And should not worry any about, anybody about, uh, anything backing up. That, and just thank you to everybody, staff and planning commissioners.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
No, just comments. Nice to hear the appreciation for staff. I know, working, uh, I guess still alone. James isn't here. Either that you're getting the stuff turned out quick, very gratifying, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm getting a lot of support from my hand as well.
All right, uh, any, anybody else in the, I, I think I already closed the public hearing, so. A little bit out of order. I'll close it again, um, at this point. Any comments? Uh, then at this time, I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion that we accept. Entitlement is found to be consistent with the original mitigated negative. Proof of the series Gateway Center. Now, the proposed project also falls categorical. Section one-five-three-two, class thirty-two, infill development projects of the California government. I'm sorry, California Environmental Quality Act, and the approval of entitlement is not subject to further environmental review. And also that we approve twenty-two dash sixteen, uh, U P, subject to the findings and the conditions contained in the. The twenty-two dash twenty-five.
All right, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Catchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you to, uh, Series Gateway Center LLC. That was three developments, and we're all looking forward to. Seeing them built, um, along the freeway, right? We'll move on now to new business. There is none, no public meetings. No unfinished business, no matters initiated by the planning commissioner staff, and reports. Anything to report, Mr. Del Nero?
Oh, hi.
Mr. Catchell.
I'd just like to, I feel very gratified to see these three projects. One, I don't remember the last time we had three items on one plan. I don't remember seeing the number stick down there.
In the number six. And.
No, but it, it's, uh, it's nice to see this is coming to fruition after all this year, planning and hoping, and then the pandemic slowed everything down. Now we've got three things on one agenda, all that, develop that property. The, uh, center allowed at some point in the near futures. It's very happy to see it.
Uh, this past Saturday with the one-tape community event, but on by the Chamber of Commerce, it was a great turnout. I know the chamber put a lot of hard work in, a lot of restaurants in the city participated, so it was a good event.
Um, the only thing, I have a question, and maybe you're gonna get to this in your report, Christopher. And that is, uh, the items that were on the meeting that was canceled due to the power outage. You'll let us know when those are coming back, cause those weren't on tonight, so that's all I have. Uh, let's see, city attorney, let's just take a moment and look at you. Well, congratulations on that and the birth of your second child. We congratulate you on that as well. Um, all right, uh, chief. All right, we're gonna move to Kevin while he gets that microphone.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just wanted to confirm the engineering staff did the inspection of the asphalt place. On service front of Gateway, it came out.
Great. Get it, chief? Great, thank you for that. All right, Christopher, you're last.
Thank you. The two items that were on the last meeting agenda, which was canceled due to the power outage. Will be heard at the next planning commission meeting, October third. And. I also wanted to share with you again that Goldstone is having their soft opening on, on September twenty-sixth. At eleven AM.
What, say that again?
Goldstone.
Yep, no, the date.
September twenty-sixth.
September twenty.
At eleven AM is their soft opening. Their grand opening will be on October eighth. Um, there will be a ribbon cutting, chamber will be there, and the time for the October eighth is still being determined by their marketing group. So we'll, we'll find out as soon as we can, unless maybe Daniel knows, and I haven't heard.
Do not have any.
Okay, I think we're still waiting on the mark.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you so much. Oh, I lost my place. So with that, it brings me to adjourning the meeting to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which will be held on Monday, October third. Thank you. Have a good night.